I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did everybody have a chance to review the agenda?
It did. I moved to approve the agenda.
One second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, two things. One, you'll know, I sent the updated, but Jim's got a personal matter he had to attend to, so he can't be here. So the sheriff agreed to move to 9:30. The other thing on your appointments, Fair Board is a five-year term, so it should say 2030 as opposed to 2028.
It's crazy, 2030.
Yeah.
That would be here in two months.
No, I thought 2022 was a long time.
Any further discussion on the agenda? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Did everybody have a chance to review the minutes from the last regular meeting?
I moved to approve the minutes from the December 2nd meeting. Yeah.
I'll second that. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the last December 2nd meeting. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Did everybody have a chance to review the vouchers?
Yeah, I would move to approve the vouchers after we make our examinations of some things.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the vouchers. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. You're very excited, aren't you?
Lee O'Reilly, is that for next year? For next year's audit or last year's?
Last year. They'll be presenting at the second meeting in January, first or second, I can't remember what, all my swerve.
About this upcoming one?
Yeah.
They're gonna have, are they gonna try and get like their engagement letters or something like that sent out? I think, is that what they were having trouble with last year?
Um, they just, they're gonna schedule, so they, so we're right, we were scheduled right out of the gate this time. And so we'll have our audit returns really much sooner than normal.
Morning, Kristi.
Good morning. How are you?
Okay.
Good.
Okay. Oh, my gosh.
Man, there's more.
I know. What a sneaky trick. They put them in the bottom.
Yeah. Get your shovel out.
I know.
We're waiting for it to get hit with the tax. Here we have Resolution 2025-17, Amendment to 2025-26 budget.
We've moved to doing this twice a year. As we receive unanticipated income, we use an account. So there's a few accounts you'll see. 520 is the big one where we put unanticipated and then 518, which was savings now, but, what is that one? Insurance?
Planning and zoning.
Oh, yeah. So, um, we did not budget enough in the planning and zoning for notices. And so just to make sure that Laura can run notices, one of those learning curve things I needed to undergo. So we also didn't anticipate any revenue for planning and zoning. So what I'm asking is that the revenue we've received so far be amended into her budget so she can pay for public notices in the newspaper.
Okay, Platte County Resolution 2025-17, Amendment to the 25-26 budget. Whereas Platte County has received unanticipated revenue in the sum of $120,253.24, as reflected in the following revenue accounts. Account number 518, zoning permits, license, $4,270. Account 520, other unanticipated revenue, $100,040.48. Account 13, insurance payment, $16,476.29. Whereas Platte County entered into a grant agreement on September 16th, 2025, with Community Action of Laramie County for the service, community service block grant, in the sum of $25,000 for a term of October 1, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. And whereas the budget of the general fund may be increased by the resolution pursuant to Wyoming State Statute 164113, and now therefore be resolved by the governing body of Platte County Wyoming, that the following accounts shall be amended as follows. Commissioners litigation, $60,000. Treasure supply, $50,000. Attorney armory, $750,000. Sheriff canine operations, $41,250, sheriff recruiting, $7,000. Sheriff training, $6,500. Sheriff litigation, $15,000. Facilities building maintenance, $17,509,000. Planner and printer and publishing, $4,270. Detention board prisoners, $253,150. Federal grants, community service block grant, $25,000. Administration printing, $100,000. And public health, $520,000, or $5200, excuse me.
Yeah, and the new.
16 day assumed of 2025.
Sorry, the new line item that you're not used to seeing is that sheriff recruiting. So this is a discussion. Last year, the sheriff's office hosted a training and got a $22,000 payment for doing so. And so we need to put some in litigation because we'll have some deductible to pay. But I really think that we need to use some advertising opportunity through some employer platforms that other agencies are having luck getting folks from other states to take up these positions. And so in talking with the sheriff's office, I think that 60, or excuse me, $7,000 will help do some advertising on platforms, targeting someone law enforcement in other states to try to get some vacancies filled.
Any questions? I would entertain a motion for the approval of Platte County Resolution 2025-17.
I move to approve Resolution 2025-17, Amendment to 2025-26 budget.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve Platte County Resolution 2025-17, Amendment to 25-26 budget. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'm not sure. Check what the sheriff want to get to.
Yeah.
Okay, we have treasurer Ritz on our agenda. Good morning, Kristi.
Good morning. Thanks for having me. I don't have a lot to report on my side from today. Our, our sales tax is right about where we expected it. We have gone ahead and you'll see in the miscellaneous receipts that sometimes it'll show like $2 million, $2 million dollar transfer between the two. It's, I have to have a receipt to show where it comes out of my general fund and into the savings and then back and forth. By, by utilizing that strategy, our, our portion of the interest for December from our savings count is $12,000. So.
Congratulations.
It was, it was really a push for Malcolm that made me do that. Where we also had a conversation with Tony about the inmate trust money. And we are doing something similar through Platte Valley with, with that, where we have the largest portion of the going to in. It's not a traditional savings, but it's, it's a much higher paying, paying rate that we can transfer back out of if we needed it. But they'll be able to capitalize on some of the interest. And then especially if they, if they have a goal in mind, that they know that we're gonna go ahead and, trying to save towards this specific goal.
That's the inmate trust fund?
That's the inmate trust fund that's in Platte Valley, one of those special use that can only be used for the benefit of the inmates. So I think we're moving forward. The sheriff has been great and I've been still updating some conversations about getting those accounts. So they're very clear. So that, that's about all I have. And again, property taxes, if you're paying them in full, we'll do by December 31st. We have, we're getting two new license plates. We just, we're gonna have a search and rescue license plate. And we'll also have a rodeo license plate after the first of the year.
Rodeo license plate? What's that? Let me guess, steamboat.
We got a sneak peek, but the Department of Transportation doesn't want us to steal their thunder, so they're like, that's really. Yeah, steal their thunder. You guys have any questions for me?
No, I just.
Oh.
I was just gonna say, the interest in the, the stuff you've been doing with the savings is awesome. That does make a huge difference, Kristi. Thank you very, very much.
Yeah. Well, if you'll indulge me for just a second, I wanted to thank you guys for all your hard work individually. You've always shown such honesty, kindness and dedication to the people of Platte County, to myself, to my employees, and to the people you represent. And collectively, your board continues to show thoughtfulness, fairness and accountability. And I just wanted to let you know that the work you do is seen and appreciated, even, even in the hard times. And I appreciate that you guys, if somebody comes to you with a problem about me, feel like you stand up and say that. And so I want you to know that I feel the same way. We're, we're blessed with what we work like here at the county. So.
I agree. Thank you.
So, okay, so there's my selfish. Do you have something for upstairs?
I'm partying.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we have Assessor Apple on our agenda. She has some tax translations this morning.
I wasn't working hand up too much.
Don't worry, we moved up. I wanted her to be the one that delivered them.
These are really more modifications than anything. So for tax year 2024, we're canceling the bill for Juan and Joni Reyes. Canceling, so what happened was they moved a mobile home from in town to out of town. And we failed to move it in our system, so we just needed to correct the mill levy on it, just really all that we're doing. So we're gonna cancel the tax bill for 2024 in the amount of $417.71. And then. $417.71. And then by moving it into the correct mill levy, that'll change the tax bills. So we're gonna modify the tax bill to $389.10. And because they've already paid their 2024 tax bill, then Kristi will do a rebate in the amount of $28.61 for that difference between the two.
And then what's the other 2024 bill then? So you have the mobile home for 14, 17.
Yeah, for 14, 17, 11. Then we're modifying it to $389.10.
I mean, that makes so much sense.
And then.
What year is that one? So is there two of the same?
So then there's gonna be tax year 2025.
Okay.
We're just modifying it. So we'll cancel the bill for $295.36. And we'll move it into the correct tax district and modify the tax bill to $273, or excuse me, $275.13.
Is that for the same one from here?
Yes.
24?
So this is for tax, the one I just said was for tax year 2025. I started with tax year 2024.
So there's supposed to be two of these? The same?
Yep. So this is, this is the rebate for the $28.61 for the overpayment in 2024.
Was we looking at the wrong numbers?
Yeah.
Okay. So these are all for Reyes's, so I would entertain a motion.
Okay. So I would move to approve the tax cancellation and rebate as presented.
I'd second that. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the tax cancellation and rebate as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks for that.
Have a good day.
Wouldn't be so bad if you didn't have to sign everyone three times.
Was the total rebate 4884? I was wondering if they made that math.
The total rebate would be $28.61.
Oh, total for both of yous?
Yeah. So 25 hasn't been paid.
Oh, okay.
So 25 will just be modified to the 275.
I was excited because if you add them up, I learned something from Kids Place Live. It's called a houndrum. Does the same forward and back, 4884.
All right.
English lesson for the day.
Lot of paperwork for 28 bucks. Maybe everybody uses 28 bucks worth of paper.
So does that, does a placement of that change where the taxes go to?
Oh, man.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking. More, it goes to like the fire districts or something like that. Or wherever the district is.
Okay.
So like with it moving out of the town of Leyland, it'll reduce, because the town has eight. So it'll reduce the town's dispersness by then.
Sitting on the one half, it takes all kinds of.
Yeah. It'll go two, one as opposed to three.
So that makes a bigger difference.
You clean it up well.
More than 28 bucks.
Tiger?
Okay.
Anywhere around town is not me. Not artist enough?
No.
Some of the stuff you see on them trains, them people could do that for, I mean, they're artists.
Yeah.
Think about it.
It's just not directed in the right direction.
Exactly.
All right. Most of our criminals over there, they could use their evil for good.
It'd be worth something.
Yeah. Here, we have our sheriff on our agenda. Good morning, guys.
Good morning, gentlemen. So did you guys get paperwork for? So essentially what that is, is that's our fingerprint machine. And that contract that we have through them is, and by the way, it has been looked at by the county attorney's office, is to allow for instantaneous results or sending, you know, sending over the internet. All that, Will kind of go over further on the stuff that he's been around it longer. So the machine was done on a grant through the state and DCI. It's, the machine's really expensive. Part of the grant was they provided the first year service contract. And then they gave us the machine for no cost. The minimum that we went over and looked at was this nine to five maintenance, which I believe is, if you can go to the other page, Malcolm, I think it was level C. This page? Uh, the life scan system maintenance there.
You want page two, Ethan?
Yes, it'd be the nine to five. Yeah, so level C there, nine to five maintenance services. That basically is our best option to keep the machine up and going if something happens with it. Um, we're on the fiber optic through DCI, through that already. If we don't have the machine going, I don't know if they're gonna keep providing the fiber optic to a jail as well. Because that's specifically for that machine to transmit down to DCI for fingerprints and sex offender registry stuff. And that's the big push for the machine and the upgrade. For the 40, I think it's 4185. I don't think that's too much to ask to have somebody there within that timeframe to be on ground, to fix the machine if it goes down. Our sex offenders get fingerprinted on this machine. Every arrest that comes in gets fingerprinted on this machine. If we have issues with the old machine for the public, the general public, they can be fingerprinted on this. If they need results, choose for identification purposes, if people don't want to tell us who they are, we can send it down, call DCI, say, hey, can you tell us who this person is if you're gonna go to this or anything like that? And it gives us basically an instantaneous result so that we can get it through the court process faster as well.
Well, that, you know what you're dealing with.
Exactly. So criminal histories and everything's, it's just a, it's a tool that we use that helps us out a lot. Without this contract, we basically go back to the old way where we can fingerprint our machine, but we're sending prints off to wherever we need to go.
And there's two pieces of equipment?
Yeah, so we have the old machine still, and we use that for the general public so we don't have to bring them into the jail site. This is for one piece of equipment that's connected to that.
What are the two separate charges?
Um, the one, I would have to look at that again.
Because they both say annual maintenance.
Yeah, I don't.
That's why I thought maybe the equipment location.
They broke out my shirt number, if that means anything.
Two separate pieces of equipment.
Oh, one is probably the printer.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
That's what I was thinking.
So they did both, when they upgraded the machine, we got the fingerprint machine and the new printer as well. So they are, we've had to use them one time already because it wasn't transmitting correctly. And they had somebody there within about eight hours to, to fix it.
So does this get you instantaneous feedback all hours of the day or just?
Yes. So as long as somebody's there at DCI, we'll have instantaneous feedback. So nine to five Monday through Friday, if not over the weekend, we'll have it on Thursday, Monday morning, which we're not running court Monday morning until Monday morning, but.
Right.
It's just as long as somebody's there to read and receive the data down at DCI.
Okay. And then currently with our, with our current plan, is it all, is it continuous?
No, it's the same plan that they're on now.
So you guys, you won't be changing plans?
No.
Okay. And I was gonna say, because I can see if you book somebody Saturday and you have to wait till Monday to figure out who he is, that would be a problem. But if you guys are dealing with that right now, then that's probably not as big as I think it is.
I know.
And Tony, the sheriff, he went to the sheriff's meeting, and I know he knows a little bit more on that side. They brought this up. I wasn't able to attend that meeting.
Yeah.
He can speak on what the sheriffs and everybody was talking about with this.
The general consensus on that is with the machine essentially being free, that first year being free, it was, it was expected that this contract was gonna be, having to be covered by the sheriff's offices throughout the state. But, you know, I guess for that price, it does seem like a, quite a high price. But for, I guess, the capabilities of it and what it provides, it's much needed. And we are the only entity in the county that has this machine, so it's used by everyone else too.
And you, you've used it for a year now?
Yes.
Haven't had any troubles?
Just the original setup, we had some issues just with transmitting and getting IP addresses set up. They had somebody on ground after the initial setup. It was within hours. They had somebody here to fix it.
Think I have any more questions for?
Something you guys have been working with and that you have figured it out and it works well with your guys' system now, then I don't.
Try not to spend the money, but it's, it's almost a must to keep everything as well in the way it's.
The services you provide. If you're getting too much of a pinch, you start asking for dimes from the other agencies wanting to use it. There's a toll booth.
We've talked about our fee schedule as well, and it's been $5 for a set of prints for a while. And we've talked about increasing our fee schedule for, for stuff to help cover some of these costs. I don't know where we're at with that, and I don't know, coming to you guys with a fee schedule and an event into that is something that we're looking at in the future. If that's something that Tony gets to do, I want to do things the right way. So it's something that we have been discussing throughout our agency of PBTs are $5, UAs are 15, PAs that we send to the state are 25. We're looking at increasing that because that's been that way since I've been there. I've been there 15 years now. So.
So they're that long?
Yeah, it's been, it has been that rate, that long. Nothing has changed. So, I mean, inflation hits everybody the same. We can't keep providing the same service for the same period. And we're the only agency that has a digital machine, so if they want to use another agency and get ink and go through that, that would be a choice on them. But we're gonna have to look at probably raising prices.
Ultimately, where does that cost fall?
On which part?
Well, like on your UAs where you're at 15 and whatnot.
It just depends on the state, whatever they're charging for the UA cups to be sent to us or the PVT straws, the cost of that. It falls on us to provide the straws.
You don't have employers coming to you and saying, where's, where's this person?
No, it's usually ordered by the judge or by the courts or something like that.
Okay.
Or probation and parole. If they're in the area, they'll have a number that gets called or something along those lines. And when their number's called, they'll call and see if they can do it. And when their number's called, they'll call and see if they can do it anyway with us, and then we give them, give them their results right there. So, there's more coming to help cover this cost that we're, that we're looking at. We just have to make sure that we did all of our ducks in a row before we submit that fee schedule to change.
We're trying to open the idea of transparency for everybody to kind of know where we're at and, you know, show the county that we're really trying to do the best we can with what we can do and. So, hopefully these are, I guess, some steps to let the folks know that we're really trying to do what we can.
Where, guys, do you think this will be taken out of? What line do you think? See, we did, we didn't budget for it, obviously, but I think it's worthwhile, just to be clear.
Yeah. Our service machine is used mostly for our prisoners coming in, so it'd probably be a board prisoners line item. Um, ninety percent of this machine is for new arrests or, or stuff like that, so that's, Malcolm, that's probably where I would look at budgeting this item to come out of.
Do you guys have any other questions? I would entertain a motion.
I would move, go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, you're good.
I would move to approve a maintenance agreement with IDMA, identity and security and authorized sheriff Croats to sign.
I'd second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve a maintenance agreement with IDMA, identity and security and authorized sheriff Croats to sign. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Can they go for us?
What my interview second, I'm thinking about border prisoners.
Are you okay?
Makes sense, I think.
Yeah, since we have a few minutes to win, I'll visit about maintenance on sheriff's weekends.
Yeah. Was looking at expenditures this morning, and we talked about in budgeting when David was here. And I think you've probably heard of that, you know, back when we were doing workshops, about when deputy A is off shift four days, that makes sense? And then it would go out to Ridenbridge, and then no oil change would be done and so forth and so on. But yet, they didn't want to get involved in diagnosing things, you know, at that point. They're just gonna strictly do like oil change, air filter, yada, yada, tire, whatever, you know, kind of a maintenance thing, lighter maintenance, but yet not diagnosing why the air conditioner does what it does or whatnot.
Yeah.
A live tech job.
Yeah, and so, you know, when we were looking at payables today, I'm like, oh, I haven't seen that in a while. So, is there, is, is there something that is not happening? Because, you know, Tony, you weren't involved in that at that point.
No.
And Will, you really weren't either, because this was, you know.
Yeah, I think that was between Ward and David on that discussion. I don't know a lot about what they were thinking with the Ridenbridge, working on our vehicles out there. I don't know if that was us doing our own oil changes or if that was them doing them.
Well, it was them, but it was also the point of, because we've got a body of vehicles that basically take the same engine oil. And so, get a drum of that out there, Carquest or whoever, where their, their filter suppliers, you know, they would stock those filters, but you don't pay for them until you use them. You know, so they would have X amount of filters there, and then Carquest guy would go out, well, you use one of these, one of these, then you get a bill for it, and they restock you. Kind of a consignment type thing. We, we talked about doing that, and I don't know where we're at in that. Because this is, I, I'm not throwing anybody under the bus.
No.
Don't get me wrong.
Honestly, I, I would say it probably got forgotten about with everything that's been pushed forward since September. Probably a good thing it got brought up, because I, I don't even, I remember it being discussed, but I don't remember it like being as.
I think we were thinking of ways, you know, that we could save money.
Yeah.
Yeah. If, if we could just do those type of things out there, Ridenbridge, it would save quite a little money. We were looking at the invoices from the recent repairs.
I do know that our, our transport vehicles are up there about every month and a half because they're putting miles on with the US Marshals of Immigration right now.
Those are your higher, higher mileages, aren't they?
Where, I just took one up to Ruarts yesterday with Clyde. It seems like we're doing that about every six weeks.
Yeah, it's about right.
If I had to put a number on it for that set of mileage, I'd say it's about every six weeks.
And how long could you be without that when you drop it? How long do they have it?
Uh, like this one, I think they've got it for two days, but we've got two spares sitting there that we can rotate through.
Okay, okay, so it's not something that you gotta have it six hours?
It's not like our, our vehicles, like for Tony, myself, or any of the guys that are on the patrol, it's not something they've got to have back anyway.
Yeah.
It's.
Then it's off, if you got them, that's when you would, okay.
You know, and that's, that's the real hard part with us being staffed where we are. I mean, we're pretty much all on call twenty-four hours a day, so.
Yeah.
You know, having that vehicle saves response time by quite a bit.
So, how do you guys do oil changes now on them?
Pretty much. Some of our guys are taking them up there, sitting with them for the hour, and then grabbing them and leaving. Some of them on their days off, they're dropping them, picking them up on their days off or when they come back on. It just depends on, on what we have going on, what they're scheduled for.
Yes, we do have spares out there for bad occasions.
Yeah, yeah. So, that, what we were thinking about is, it just changes the phone number you call, and we haven't talked to Ridenbridge about it yet, but like this iteration of the conversation, but I would imagine it, however, I would like it to be, it'd be someplace where you go, okay, we have like one car a week or something like that, whatever the schedule is, and just go, okay. Friday is that day, or, you know, at least give them some time period that lines up with the deputy's day off or something like that. But some version of that where.
Instead of scheduling it with Ruarts.
Yeah, just schedule with Ridenbridge.
Schedule with Ridenbridge and do the same exact thing.
Yeah.
A conversation that we have.
Yeah, I was definitely open to that. That system that Chris has out there now, it'll, it'll do these.
Yeah.
I mean, it'll all just incorporate in, right?
I, I think that, yes, yeah, I think that that's what he's been really excited for, and so, for Christmas present, he can try it out on all the deputies' cars. He might not see this that way. It's like giving somebody a puppy for Christmas.
Yeah.
Great.
Perfect. No, if they are open to discussion on that, I, I think that's a great idea, and I think we can push forward.
You think you probably, you can fit something like that, like a schedule like that in there?
Yeah, we'll make it work.
And we discussed it, you know, during budget time to make it work, and we're just, it's not happening, and we'd like to see it happen.
Yeah, we'll just follow up with those casting.
Yep, we can do that.
Granted, when you, when you guys need your rides, you need your rides. But there's probably a way we can facilitate making something work, you know, I would think.
Yeah. Fifty-five gallon drum of oil and filters a little cheaper than.
Yeah. I mean, the stuff, the stuff is like four times more expensive. I'm not sure what you get for four times more expensive, but.
Looking at the invoices, you know, for the brake job, and I just did a brake job on one, like you get this at home, and you did one of those.
Fifteen an hour, Steve will just bring them out to you.
Here's, so, here's the other thing you find, you go, you go pull it off, and they say your brakes are done, and you pull them off, and you have full brake pads. So, that, that's like six hundred dollars gone. That did not need to happen.
Yeah.
I mean, there is a little bit of that going on.
When, when, when you got a vehicle out there and you drop it off for an oil change, whatnot, and let's say they find something in their vehicle inspection report and they come back, does that come to you or does it come to the guy that dropped it off or authorization to move forward to? How does that work?
They usually call the person that they dropped it off. So, we have all our phone numbers, all our vehicle, all of them numbers aligned with the phone number, and then Ward's number's on there, like Tony mine, and Cody's is on there as well, just in case they can't go hold somebody.
Okay.
So, they usually call the deputy. Now, I've had really good luck with the deputies calling one of us to say, hey, they needs this, or do we need to go ahead?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which has been working like brakes is a big thing because we're hard on brakes.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's, I think that's a really good way to manage it, because.
It, it happens.
Your transport that's out there now, when you, when you go to pick that up, you just fully expect to sign a ticket for the oil change and whatnot. Because if you showed up to do that and they said, oh, by the way, and you look at that, and it's like three hundred and forty-nine dollars.
They call before they.
Yeah, they have to pre authorize.
That's where I'm at. Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I'm at. And they should.
Yeah. Yeah. Should is kind of a dangerous word. We don't really have a huge amount of problems with them, but I mean.
Yeah.
There are those, those places out there that.
And I'm not accusatory at all.
Oh, no, no.
I don't want it to sound that.
No, but we've all been there. I mean, I've, I've got bills on my personal vehicle that I did not say, I saw them doing that.
Yeah.
Heck, a lot of that stuff I can do my own.
Yeah.
Why the heck?
Yeah, as long as you listen to a little car talk along the way.
Yeah.
What's that sound mean?
Turn up the radio.
That's right.
Get the duct tape and cover up any lights around the dashboard, per se, and.
Yeah, I guess, I guess that's all we're really asking.
Yeah, you know, that's.
You can work on that.
That's very good.
After everything else has been done.
Nope, that is, that's not hard to ask. We can do that.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at that, what we looked at this morning and, you know, if, if it stayed that way going forward, you know, what we're just spending on the fingerprint machine thing, it, it's done, you know.
Yeah, not even, no question, yeah.
Yeah.
Now, it's just we gotta talk to Ridenbridge, so.
No, we got a happy box of cookies over there. We'll take care of it.
We'll re-box them, re-gift them.
Yeah. Some cold coffee, like some cold burnt coffee.
Oh, yeah, yeah. If you're gonna do something, do it right.
That's right.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Two thousand seven used to have the check engine light on it still.
Still does.
That's right.
Obviously, it's a sensor you don't need.
And you just open the hood?
Yep, I checked it. Still there.
Yeah, it's like, yeah, checked it. It was there last time I looked.
Yeah.
You do have Justin here and Cindy.
Okay, well, we'll move into our fair board interviews. Good morning.
Morning.
You're interested in being on the fair board?
That's correct.
Um, why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you'd be interested in being on the fair board?
Uh, my name's Justin Genel. I, um, run a cow calf operation with my wife. I had a seventeen-year career with, uh, Chug, with USDA. And then ended up a partner in Chugwater Chili for about seven years. Sold that a few years ago, and now we're just ranching full-time, but, uh, been getting more involved at, at fair as my daughter gets a little bit older. She shows up there, so, um, I just like to, if I'm gonna be out there, uh, and involved, I'd like to be in capacity where I can actually help, so. But, uh, any, any area that I can help, I'd be happy to, so.
Have you ever served on a board before?
Yeah, I, I was on PCEV, represented Chugwater, um, for a couple of years. So, I did that here in, uh, Black County. Uh, I chaired the Chugwater Chili Cookoff, and I'm on the PR board for Shine Frontier Days.
Are you familiar with the fair board and what the responsibilities of the fair board are?
Yeah, I believe so, yeah. Been to a, I haven't been to a lot of meetings, uh, but should have been trying to go to a few more lately, but, uh, yeah.
What is your idea of what their responsibilities are?
Uh, well, it does seem like it's changed over, over the years a little bit. They have, seems like they have a little less responsibility now, but essentially, am I correct that they're just still with the, the fair itself, not necessarily the fairgrounds? Uh, that was my understanding or somewhat.
They, they still kind of manage the fairgrounds.
Manages the fairgrounds.
Big picture.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, as far as things they want to do out there and, um, maintenance and those type of things, they, they have, kind of a list of things that they want to see done, and then we manage the budget, and as we can look through those things, we would be prepared to get that done.
We've taken over, the maintenance portion of it is what the biggest part that has changed is that we've added maintenance responsibilities and some other stuff to our plate instead of the fair board's plate or our budget instead of the fair board's budget. And so, the maintenance crew will go from here to there and kind of take care of all the county properties instead of just being siloed in the courthouse. But that, that's probably what you're talking about, where the difference in responsibility is, it's mostly maintenance and stuff, the stuff that is the everyday things that we can help out with our crew that we already have.
Using the, just the assets you already have.
Yeah, yeah.
We felt it was better, you know, instead of having a maintenance crew for out there and a maintenance crew for here, maintenance crew for the library, whatnot, just have one maintenance crew for everything and. Save a little that way, so. Do you guys have any questions for Justin?
Who do you?
I, I'm, I will not be involved in the decision process of this, but I do have a question about the PR board for Shine Frontier Days. How do you think that ties into a fair board?
I think it just, um, it's kind, kind of similar to the, to the cookoff too. I mean, it's just a managed, a matter of managing, uh, all the different things coming at you, at least during fair time. Um, there's a, there's, I mean, you gotta deal with parents, you got superintendents, uh, you got a lot of things happening at once. I was treasurer for the cookoff also, but, uh, uh, just dealing with all those different things on your plate and having to shuffle them around and, and still get things done, like it, it's kind of a similar type.
So, outside of the four H events that happen at the fairgrounds, there's quite a bit of other stuff that happens out there. What do you see or do you have any, uh, an inkling of what you'd like to see out there, either different or the same as far as other things outside of the four H and the fair event?
I'd like to see it used to capacity. I, I'm not totally in, in the weeds on that, but, uh, it feels like the, the new building, um, the, the arena itself, uh, we could be bringing a few more things into the county, uh, more events.
What do you see that looking like?
I don't see it, uh, being to full capacity, um. Uh, there, there's, I mean, Black County's in Ag County. You're not gonna get around that. And we could be bringing in, uh, more horse equine events, uh, more team ropings. Uh, there's ways to get people into the county, spend some money, stuff that, uh, maybe we can keep a few more restaurants open if we can. Couple more events a year, um, you know, there should be something going on out there every weekend in my opinion.
Be careful what you ask for running a restaurant, so thank this job.
This is very true, very true. But it just, and I don't really know what the issues are, why, why it's not being fully used, but, um, you know, it doesn't, doesn't hurt to have a fresh set of eyes out there to look at that.
So, how do you, how do you go about doing that? And looking for a perspective that's outside of this, outside, something maybe new to what I've heard before, but see, I'm interested in your, the PR for Shine Frontier Days, they do a pretty good job of keeping that thing, which is just a rodeo going and at the pace it's going. And so, I'm, not that I want to see that here, but I'm just curious how, how that goes.
Exactly, be careful what you ask for.
Yeah, no.
But, uh, yeah, I think, uh, a lot of my time, uh, and, and there was a little bit of, one of the last meetings I went to actually was, we were talking about, uh, having a photographer there and having a contracted photographer. And, uh, and one of the things Shine Frontier Days does is, is we cater to every media. You've come in there, we will hold your hand and we'll take you through every, uh, aspect. We will feed you stories. Um, we'll get you in the right places so you can get the right photo. Um, we'll get you in the right places so you can get the right photos. It, it's kind of a handheld deal, and I'm not saying we could ever do that here. Or maybe some portion of it or some, some piece of that could be, uh, done. Um, but it, it's a, it's a constant feeding that media loop. And that helps bring people out to the fairgrounds if you already have an event, and it helps build, um, you know, a little gen- generate a little excitement over things that could be done out there. Yeah, I, I agree. I think, but I think visibility. Yeah, I know a lot of good photographers around that actually do a very good job, and I think I'm very biased, but I do like th- those pictures I will sit and look at, you know, like whatever they have going on, Chugwater. And go, man, that monk looks like he's bucking on concrete, but I'm not there. But in other case, it does, like, I do like that, and that does make me go look in that direction. And so I, that's an interesting take on that, and all it takes is a little bit of foresight and some handholding every once in a while, but that's interesting. Yeah, I could see, um, you know, I don't, I'm not real familiar exactly this, the staffing situation or, or money's available, but, um, working with, uh, a fairground manager that's, uh, very accepting and willing to do more, uh, and cater to people that need, you know, maybe they need a tractor out there to work the arena, they need more help, you know, moving panels around, whatever the, the situation is. If we can figure out ways to be more accommodating, I think we could get a few more events in there possibly too. You know, and maybe there's reasons that I'm unaware of for, you know, the way things are, but I think there's a, there's gotta be opportunities to do more than is currently happening.
Justin, what do you see as the opportunity to enforce to have more, uh, more fair sponsors involved? Because it seems like every year we got this group and this business and this business, but
Yeah.
How, how would you see an effect on expanding that to where more businesses, more people in the community get involved with helping that sponsorship level and bringing that up?
Well, that's, as a, as a trans-sponsor, um, I understand that there, uh, this community is very giving. And there's a lot of, um, businesses in this community that are constantly get up for every event. But then there's, uh, there's some businesses, I believe, that just don't feel included, like they're just not part of the deal. So I think that we need to do more outreach for, uh, those that aren't being involved and figure out a way to maybe, maybe they can't do a cash donation or, or a cash sponsorship, but maybe there's some other, uh, effort that they can do to contribute, but we, we need to have somebody that's willing to go out and solicit that and work on those relationships in the areas. Uh, and not, I mean, try not to hit up the same people constantly.
Those contributions aren't always cash. Contributions can be, you know, labor, you know, people just helping.
Yeah.
You know, to a degree. This is a long appointment, five years.
It is.
I, I'm assuming you've thought about that.
I have, but I'm not going anywhere for.
Well, I doubt, doubted that, but. So in the past, Justin, um, i- if you were appointed, we would ask that you would attend a board member training. Either, I think, the UW Extension, it's an online training course on, takes a little bit of time, get on and do it, or I think the library, um, association or something also has one. There's two different ones, but we just asked that if you were appointed, you would, would you be okay with taking that training?
Yeah, certainly.
And those, those can be found on our website. I think Mel has them on the website, so. Do you have any questions for us?
Not at this point. I'd certainly visit with you more if I was appointed, as time allows, but yeah.
Well, we have another interview to do for this particular position, and we'll be doing that here this morning and then make a decision, and you're more than welcome to stay until then or if you have things to do, whatever, but we'll make a decision later today and let you know.
Perfect.
Appreciate you coming in and it's good to see people just step up to volunteer because these are volunteer positions. Not everybody's willing to volunteer.
Understandably.
Thanks. Thank you. Okay, we'll move for our lodging tax joint powers board interview. Sharon, did you have a question?
Yeah, I wanna know how far you've come with my MOU. Will I have them with the four-H or not?
With the MOU for.
Four-H and, and the fairgrounds out there.
Did, did you talk to the fair board about that?
No, they didn't have a meeting in December, so I can't do it.
So I, I'm not sure.
So you want me to meet with the fair board before I come back to you?
They would be the ones that would work up the MOU.
Oh, they'll be the ones?
Yeah, so.
Okay.
But yeah, if, if they don't know about it yet.
Although I've already talked to some of them.
Okay.
The ones that I've talked to are for.
Yeah, I think that they'll be, if you wanna work on it with them, get anyone, so.
You'd be more likely to get what you like out of it. You'd be more likely to get what you want out of it, yeah.
We've been working on how we want it worded and everything, so.
Yeah.
Um, because we just wanna cover our tracks and keep our equipment. We don't want U-County people coming and taking it from us.
That's right.
Even if we're just putting it inside so it doesn't sit out there.
Well, thanks for listening to me.
Thanks, Sharon.
Go ahead.
There you go. Don't blow away.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to Cindy Witt. Good morning.
Good morning.
You're interested in volunteering to serve on a board also?
Mm-hmm.
Um, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you'd be interested in serving on the tourism joint powers board?
I, um, have been, my grandparents lived in Platte County. My mom's lived here all her life. I've been here. I raised my children here, and now my grandkids are being raised here. I love Platte County. And one of the things I see is, um, Platte County has so much to offer, and I sometimes think that we don't do a good enough job promoting the county and the opportunities here. And my understanding is that is the lodging tax money is used to do that kind of promotion. I've been in, um, real estate thirty-six years. And part of that real estate is when people come here from out of town. Basically selling them not just a house, but selling them on this area. And we're, we're just so blessed where we live. Um, and there's so much tourism that we can promote here. Um, with our lakes and our mountains and the camping and there's just, you know, um, Oregon Trail ruts. How cool is that? Not everybody has register cliff.
Nikki and.
And the more we can get people here, even if it's just for a vacation, there's that chance they go, no, I wanna move there and be a part of that community. And then we have new people, new ideas, um, hopefully people with children. I have sold a lot of properties to people with children that have said, I don't wanna live, you know, raise my children in the community we live in. They want something like here. And so if we can get people here doing tourism-type things, maybe we can get more people moving here to live here. Um, especially in this day and age where so many people work from home. That, I don't know. Maybe I've got the totally wrong idea on the lodging tax. Um, I just know I love this community and it's time I give back to this community.
So, yeah, I think you're on the right track as far as the purpose of the lodging tax board. Um, it's a little different than say, the fair board or the library board or the housing board, um, because we, we only appoint one member to this board, so you would be the commissioner's representative to this board, and then each of the municipalities, of course, appoint their representative, so that's how it differs from the other boards, but yeah, it's, it's, um, a volunteer board like all the rest of them. There's chances for this board to work with, say, the fair board to promote different events and things like that. So, yeah, it's mostly, that's how I look at it, is promoting Platte County, so I, I think you're on the, the right track there, so. Do you guys have some questions for Cindy? You're here all my life.
I know. Both of us have been here forever. No, Jess' parents and my parents were good friends when we were go- growing up, so.
Um, Cindy, this is, this is, this is a thing that I think is really good, you know, because lifer and, and giving back, you know, like, you know, you referred to, you know. In a way, that's kind of why I got involved in this chair that I'm here. Uh, it wasn't for fame and fortune. It was, you know, to give back and, um, having said that, sixty, sixty years, because we were probably, what, six? Maybe a little before that?
Yeah.
When our folks were playing bridge. Oh, so, yeah, I think, I think that's a good thing, and, you know, when people like yourself do, um, step up to do these kind of things, it gets noticed, you know, by the rest of the folks. I mean, it really does. To where, yeah, she's been here thirty-six years, so in real estate doing this, and she stepped up. How can I help, you know? And I, I just think that's the optics of it. I mean, that's how it looks.
I think it's a pretty natural transition for you. I mean, you seriously, you know more, but you've been selling houses and stuff here. You've been selling the area for almost your whole life, pretty close to. And so you just go and spend some of, somebody else's money promoting the same thing, which is good.
Well, and in my real estate career, I've done so much marketing.
Yes.
Dealing with different types of media and things and so.
I think it's good. I don't think that you'll sit on your hands. You know what I mean? I think that you will be draw, drawn to do something.
Um, you know, I will tell you, I have not been on any other boards. I've been on committees. Um, like I was on the junior livestock sale committee when my kids were in four-H. There was a need, and so at that time, I was on that committee. Um, I'm on the old grads committee, 'cause guess what? I'm old. Making sure, you know, that we have that event in the county. Um, I, uh, was Tom Branla, I always say, when Tom Branla calls me, I always should say no. And I always say, okay. And I was on the mini golf committee, and that was, we met once a week for two years, and I was, I'm just so proud of that facility we built down there. Um, I think it's such a great thing for the community. And I'm on the two-hundred-and-fifty-year celebration committee. We're working through some ideas on that. Um, so as far as being on a board, no committees that benefit the community, yeah, I have done.
You know, in like a baseball analogy, you gotta hit a whole bunch of singles sometimes to get that run home, and that's what it takes. You know, it's not the one swing, it's, it's a whole bunch of small ball to make things happen, and, and you've been involved in that, you see that. How long is the term for the lodging tax board life?
Three years. Yeah, it could, it could be a lifetime, I mean, term, but.
Don't be doing that to me.
No, we're, we're not restricting your years, Illumina, to say it that way, so.
So it's a, and it's a unique one. Um, technically, it's a totally separate governmental organization. You just have a representative on it.
Joint Powers.
So all of the agreements and the bylaws are online under the joint, under the lodging tourism joint powers board page. I would, I'm not sure if the lodging tax board pays for them to go through the public officer training, but if not, I think that's a cost we should incur and ask Cindy to do.
Like?
The public officer.
So, so they're required to go through the public officer training because it's a separate?
Because they have authority over tax dollars, so they'll be required to go through it. I just don't know.
I don't, is there a cost associated with that?
Some of them, yes, um, some of them, no. There, there's a really good one through the, um, oh, no, it's escaping me, the nonprofit network, but anyway, um, I would hope that that's something that we could shoulder that cost if there is a cost. It, it's valuable in that teaches them about the requirements for tax dollars, for reporting, things like that.
Basically, all special districts in any way that manages taxpayer money needs to take the, um, training, so.
Yeah, and then, um, it's obviously funded by lodging tax, which is essentially a sales tax on hotels, RV spaces, Airbnb. Anywhere that provides lodging, there's a six percent, um, sales tax. Three goes to the state of Wyoming, three goes to the county. Not to the county, to the lodging tax board.
Yeah.
Really, and the, and the plus is the, uh, they just instituted camping at state parks, getting that money also. Going towards lodging tax, which is quite a boost in the arm during the summer for lodging tax.
So is that on state or federal or state-owned county spots?
State, yes.
Oh, all, any, any of the state parks.
Right.
In the county.
So, yeah, you know, like we've seen Glendo, Guernsey during Fourth of July, boy, that's a income generator, you know, for lodging tax, so.
And then we just asked that you would take the same board member training that we talked about.
Absolutely.
Do you have any questions for us?
No.
Well, um, thanks for coming in and applying. You're welcome to stay. We'll make our appointments a little later this morning, but, um, you're welcome to stay or we'll let you know sooner or another.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Is that, is Cindy your only interview for that?
Yeah, that's the only application that I received for the joint powers board.
Thank you.
And, yeah, I know we talked about it during sheriff interviews. Curtis Hockruck was your appointee, um, I think really served well and represented your interests on that board, so, um.
Yeah, we've really had some good representation ever since that
Yes.
came into existence. Okay, we'll move on to the second fair board interview, Mr. Marty Hillman. Good morning.
Sir, how are you?
Good. How are you this morning? Why don't you, uh, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in being on the fair board?
Well, um, originally come from Colorado, Big County, Long County. Um, was in fair pretty much my, quite a bit my younger years until baseball took over my career. And then, um, and then, so like, and then I just, I kind of been just in the agricultural industry, you know, like, you know, my whole life, basically. Um, and then I moved and then I was, then I was on a board. I was, I was vice president of the, of the archery, uh, Greeley Archers down in Colorado there for two years until I moved here, and so obviously had to give it up. Um, so it kind of, you know, something similar to, you know, where you got a budget and you got this and you got that, or, you know, something similar, just a smaller version of it. Um, we got interested into this whenever I kind of got asked to get into the events committee, um, a couple of years ago, uh, here, and, and so, you know, just kind of. a couple of years ago here. And so, you know, just kind of basically taking over, not taking over, but being involved in, you know, getting events lined up for fair and stuff like that, and they come, kind of come in, well, just different ideas and stuff with Brockman and stuff, and she asked me to be on that. Got pretty involved in that. And then I started, kind of started going to meetings and stuff like that. I could just see a lot of, I don't know if change is, is the right word, but just some things that could be helped or a different direction maybe because of old past stuff, just, you know, kind of listening to the community in general after the, after the meetings after fair and stuff, just kind of, you know, concerns about what people had and changes that, you know, over thirty years of stuff or forty years of stuff for old people, stuff like that. It's like, okay, well, we're, I kind of see that we're stuck maybe in old lineages, illinages of people, you know, and stuck there. And I think that there's a lot of change that can come on as far as making it a little bit more modern, you know, and trying to help out as far as, is trying to upgrade some things, you know, and started instead of using forty-year-old technology, you know, basically, like we use at the ranch, forty-year-old technology, you know, we got drones now, you know, instead of riding around forty people, you know, and so just, that's kind of, I just, I just think that, I think there's ideas out there that are good, that are getting overlooked. And so that's just kind of what I'm, you know, and I don't know if overlooked even correctly, but I, I just, that's kind of what interested me, is I just kind of want to just try to, you know, just try to upgrade, I guess, a little bit, with ideas of people, you know, and, and again, I don't have kids, so I'm looking at, I'm looking at a big realm of things. I'm not looking at kids that just show steers or kids that just do crafts or, you know, or stuff like that, or even in your open stuff like that. I'm looking at a realm of things, you know, so I'm looking at it from here instead of here. Because I, I know as, you know, sometimes when you get to listen to the parents and stuff like that, you know, they're going to inadvertently maybe tend to, you know, if their kids are in showing steers or something like that, they're going to kind of lock on that to where, you know, I'm looking at more of a, like I said, a big picture of, of things and trying to want to help the whole thing as far as all the way from the events to the, you know, to the fair itself, you know, just by kind of listening to what the community comes to. Like, I mean, I've had people come to me, not even being on the fair board and stuff like that, just kind of, you know, like, well, you know, maybe, maybe there's an opportunity here for me or something, you know, and I, and I, I do show a lot of interest in it. And so, you know, like I said, just, you know, from going through, through the, to the meetings and stuff like that, I just think that there's a lot of opportunity there that, that is being missed as far as, I, I know there's been budget cuts that have happened to everybody and stuff like that, but how do we make up this, you know, there's, there's opportunity to make up that budget cut through the different various things, you know, whatever it may be. And so that's kind of where I'm kind of seeing things a little bit.
So basically, just because that's how we've always done it, isn't a good reason to continue doing it that way?
Exactly. I, I, I think, I think that there's, I, I do, I think there's a lot of missed opportunity there through, through technology and new generations and stuff like that, because I firmly think that the agricultural world to me in general kind of started at fair, like, for me, it started at fair, but, I mean, fair now, back then and fair nowadays is two different totally things. I mean, it's, I mean, obviously, I mean, you guys know through ranching or whatever your guys' professions are and stuff like that. You know, it's not the same as whenever you started it, even if you did it ten years ago, it's still a little different now, you know, and so it's just, I just think that, that I think we're just kind of stuck in the old realm of things, but I think that there's more opportunity out there, which is where I'm going with.
And you understand this would be a five-year commitment?
Yes, sir.
Term of five years.
Marty, I asked Justin the same question. I'm going to ask you, how do you see going out, whether it's going out or soliciting, if you will, more people to help with the contributions for the fair, sponsorships and whatnot? How do you, how do you see that? How do you see it rolling?
I, I do know that there is, whether we all agree that this is a sore thumb to a lot of people, but we have, because I, I have been involved in some, some outside events and stuff that have happened, and we've gotten sponsorships coming in from like the energy companies and stuff like that. There, there is people out there willing to do it, and I think, I think how, how you approach that is definitely how it is. And I don't know how things have been approached. I, I know that we've lost some sponsorships over the years for whatever reason. But, but I do know that, that like, through this energy company and stuff like that, there is ways to get money to come in and they're willing to, to give it away, obviously for whatever reasons, but, you know, like I said, that's a, you know, but there is money to be out there. However you, you know, we need to go about it, you know, I think every situation's a little bit different, but, you know, and how you handle it.
Well, you said people had approached you, you know, about this idea and that idea and so forth and so on, so you probably feel like a sounding board already, to a degree.
Yeah, yeah. And so, so like I said, maintenance, maintenance on, on the stuff, on the fairgrounds and stuff like that, is some of that stuff like that. I know that what has been brought up is like a roof on, on the, the indoor horse barn or the stalls and stuff like that at one time was, was, and I don't know if that's been fixed or not, I haven't really been, I haven't caught up on that necessarily. But, but I heard, you know, it's not in our budget, I've heard that. And so I was like, well, okay, well, how can we, how can, or where do we need to go to this? And then, like I said, where would I go to that? I haven't figured that out yet, I can just be honest with you, because I just haven't been put in that position to figure that out. But I know that there, you can go to somebody like the energy company or something like that and say, hey, this is what our intentions are, this is kind of what we see on how things are going. What's your thoughts on that? How can, you know, is there any way you could help us on that, in, in any way, you know, and, and we can do like sponsors, okay, let's say you want to do that, you know, we can say, hey, whatever, you know, and just donate it to them or whatever, or donate an A or whatever, you know, just named after whatever.
Yeah, and sometimes contributions aren't cash.
Exactly.
You know, it's not a check, it's not, it's, it's somebody that's saying, hey, I can give you a part of a day on Saturday to help with this.
Absolutely.
You know, that kind of thing, you know, and that is community involvement.
Yes.
As opposed to a corporate paying to have a sign.
Yes, sir.
You know, and that's like grassroots.
Yeah. Okay, so now, I know that that is tough to get, because usually you want to do like this, you intend to, even like back when I was in the archery world, it was always the same people setting up like archery shoots or, you know, archery events or whatever, it's always tends to be the same people. That is a tough, tough situation to get people to, to get to, and for whatever reason, I haven't, I don't know, I, I don't know why, you know, they want all the fun but not the work that comes behind it, you know, and, and they, and a lot of people don't understand it, and I, I honestly can't give an honest, a hundred percent answer on why people don't do that. You, you know, like I said, I, 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 you know, I haven't really thought about a lot of, because what we used to do is, is, is in the archery world is we would, you, you know, we would give them, I hate to use this term, free, but, but, you know, we, we would, we'd give them like free memberships or free whatever, or free whatever, in that realm of things, you know. In this one, it would, it would be tough, just for the simple fact of is, is you are asking them to do a lot for, for what, for something. You know, we, we've had, we've struggled with getting people to come in and just set up like panels and stuff for whatever, you know, for, you know, for, for an admission to something, you know, like a roping or something like that, that's just kind of outside stuff or whatever. We've done that. And then we've had pretty, pretty good success with that, you know, to where we've had, okay, come in and set up, you know, set up, not necessarily, like I said, this is totally outside stuff, but, you know, and then give them, you know, a couple runs for free or something. You know, we'll, we'll leave it there for that out of our pockets just because they've gotten people coming in and help. You know, and that's, that's worked a little bit, but the thing that, that is tough to me is, is everybody wants something, you know, in, in return for volunteer work. And that's what I struggle with honestly, is how do I drag the people in just to say, I, I would really enjoy to help with this.
If they want something, they're truly not volunteers.
Absolutely. And then that's what I'm thinking. And then, but that's what I'm saying is it's just, you know, that's been a tough thing that we've struggled with, is trying to get people into helping just out of their free will and, and moral nature, if that's what you want to say, you know what I'm saying? And, and I had a struggle, I mean, we, we found out last year is it's tough just to even get people to come to the events, you know. I mean, we did, we lost a little bit of money last year because, you know, on, on a couple of things, just because the attendance was down and that we were expecting a bigger attendance, you know. Some of that was advertisement type stuff that got kind of malfunctioned a little bit, you know, the times were different on four different, or three or four different situations, you know. The, the ad that goes out in, in, in the paper was different than what the time that we'd actually scheduled for, you know, and stuff like that. So some of that was, it had, had to do with it also, is that there was conflicting times and stuff there. So communication on that, and the things needs to definitely improve there, you know, as far as, as far as, you know, a board type thing, you know, it's trying to get that worked out to where it's not. So, you know, you got one set and, and, you know, and get it passed through everybody, make sure everything is okay with everything, instead of just having, having to rely on one person that's got a lot of stuff to do, you know, and just make sure, just kind of double check yourself, you know, double check yourself. But, but the community thing, getting the community involved, I, that's been a tough thing that we've had happen, and I, I don't, I'm still kind of stuck on how to fix that or how to, a, a direction to go there, just a little bit, you know.
I asked Justin something, but I'm, I'm not going to be in a part of the decision-making part of this, but I did ask Justin to kind of go down a road. What do you? So with you being on the events committee, how do you see that tying into the fair board? And, because I think that's what I hear you saying, but how do you think that looks after a year? Or what do you like it to look like after a year?
As far as the events or as far as the fair?
As far as if you're on the fair board, and then you bring that experience from the event committee, how does that look? What do you guys think that'll look like?
I think if we can get the, the events committee and the fair board tied in to where they're, to where they're, where they're cohesive, you know, and, and really, you know, to where they, they, they push each other a little bit, you know what I'm saying? Because, because to me, the, the event side isn't just, you know, the ranch or the team open and all that stuff. But that's not, I, I think that it also involves all the other, I, I consider the shows an event. That's, I mean, I do. And so I think, I think that through the events committee, I could help tie in, you know, the, the, try to help improve. Because not alone, like I said, I've been part of the events committee, but I'm trying to improve that, but I do know that there is, you, you know, the shows and stuff like that need some help also, you know, as far as ideas and stuff like that. And so, you know, you know, I, I think, I think they both can, can, you know, mingle together. It's just I think we need to get the communication on both sides together. Does that make sense? And that's kind of where we're locked at right now as far as, is that. And I think, I think if we go, you know, there's a few things on, on the fair board side that needs to happen, but there's a very few things on, on the events side that needs to happen also. You, you know, and so, and I think it's very possible if we just, if we just communicate a little bit better, you know, about it. And that, and that's what's struggling now is the lack of communication on each side. You know, because I think there's this little bit of button heads, you know, and I'll call it straight up button heads a little bit on both sides. And, and, and I don't think it needs to happen that way, you, you know what I'm saying? And I just, I just, I think it, I think it'll intermingle if we just all kind of just get something, you know, just kind of, you know, guideline up, you know, and, and a structure or system put in place that, you know, that helps out. Because I, I do know like door admissions and stuff like that was kind of a, a big deal over the last couple of years, you know, who gets, you know, what percentage of the door and stuff like that. And that, and that's what I'm thinking that, you know, I think that, that each side can, can, can help each other there as far as, you know, as, as far as, you know, getting people to come in and help out with the money cost of things that things are going, you know, that'll help out with the budget side of things. You know, the biggest deal is just trying to get the community to come in for, you know, trying to get here. That's the hard thing, you, you know, because I mean, I can't, I can't, you know, I can't ask Randy Hunter to come to an event that he doesn't want to come to, he's just not gonna. You know, I just, I can't ask, you know, I, I can't ask anybody down the street just to come, hey, you know, you want to come, but how do we entice them, you know, and, and so, but that's, that's kind of my, that's kind of what I was looking at structural wise as far as the event side and, and the fair board side, is I'd like to try to get the two to, to mesh a little bit better, to help each other out a little bit more, you know, because I, I do know that, I think, if, if, if I heard right, and I might be a little bit off here, but I think the attendance were, were up a little bit, but the contestants were down a little bit or something like that. So like I said, I think, I think there's people that probably like turn books in for, you know, like crafts or something like that, but didn't have a project or something, something along them lines. And that, and that's what I'd like to see come up a little bit, is, is, you know, and, and that's, and I think, I think the opportunity is there for people to do it. I just think that, I think we just need to measure, you know, a little bit. It, it's just, there, there just seems to be a little bit of a a separation in things, you know, and, and that's a fair board as, as a whole, you know, that I've kind of noticed from, from the meetings and stuff like that. It's kind of just a little bit of a split realm, a little bit. You know, you got somebody over here that wants more new stuff, and then you got people over here that's got, they're still stuck in the old thirty, forty-year-old ways, you know, and so how do, how do we fix that, you know, and stuff? And so, you know, and that's, that just, to me, is going to take time, I think, time and patience, you know, and, and just to try, you know, I'm kind of a guy that, you know, if it doesn't, if a new way doesn't work, we can always go back to the old way and try the old way and stay there until something new comes up, we can always try. I'm always about stuff that's not, you know, if it doesn't work, not everything works the first time all the time, but it's worth a shot, you know, nothing's going to change if nothing changes. You know, and that's kind of, you know, I mean, if, if, leave it in government terms, you know, I mean, that's why we have a problem, because there's forty, forty years worth of people in there. You know, you gotta have a little bit of change, you know, so, you know, so, but that's, I'm not going to give you that.
So we talked a lot, or you talked a lot about fair and the events associated with fair, center of the fair. All those things happen in mid-July or whenever fair takes place.
Sure.
How should we be utilizing the fairgrounds today or in September or March or?
I, I know that, I know that there has been events that have happened here or are happening here or have been asked to happen here. It, it, it is kind of a struggle somewhat to get like the grounds taken care of and stuff like that. So, so this, and this is some of the issues that we've kind of ran into as far as like maybe putting on the roping or something like that, it's been, and why I think that people struggle getting here, I think, I think personally, I think the grounds haven't been really taken care of properly, so I think it just doesn't really drive people to come here. It, it's kind of a fight to put on, put on an event, because there's, they haven't gotten straight answers on sometimes, at some point in times, like, you know, how much does something cost, or how much does, you know, how much is it going to cost to put on this event? Looks, you, you know what I'm saying? I do think that there could be a, a price differential in the fairgrounds as far as like, if you're just using the indoor arena per se, that should be a cost. If you, if, if you're just using the outdoor arena, the, the big one or the little one, those should be separate costs. If you want to rent the whole thing, the whole facility, that's a whole nother cost. I think if I understand it right now, it's just a one flat rate cost for everything, while not everybody uses all the facilities, so why should they have to pay for all the facilities? Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I think currently they are broken up by.
And, and I haven't seen, that's why I said I haven't a hundred and ten percent seen that. We've, we have asked for it. That we have asked, and I, we have not seen nothing yet, because I know Brooke has tried to put on the rope in here, and it wasn't, you know what I'm saying? And I know that for a fact, because I tried to help her do it. And, and it wasn't, and she had asked, you know, what is the breakup of, hey, you know, what if we just use the outdoor arena for whatever? And, and she, she has struggled to, to try to get what that breakdown is a couple of different times, you, you know, and so.
And I, I thought those were all listed on the website, even as far as the Agroplex, if you want the big room, one cost, if you want the big room and the kitchen.
Sure, sure. And, and that could be the case, and I'd like to have it, personally have not went on, so I mean, I'm, you know what I'm saying, that's just, I'm going just strictly off kind of meetings and a little bit of running, you know, dealings that I've dealt with. It was just kind of difficult to get a, a set deal, you know, hey, are, you know, are we going to get the arena worked? No, we've got time type things, you know, and stuff like that. I think that, I, I don't know what all the hundred percent going on there, because I haven't a hundred and ten percent involved in that side of things. You know, I, I've had something different going on as far as that structure of things.
It kind of sounds like there's two different things going on as far as trying trying to entice somebody to come in at an event.
Sure.
Is one thing.
Yes.
Once you have an event, how do you get the public to come to it?
Sure.
So that's a whole separate side of it.
Absolutely. Yes. Yeah, yeah. And that, and that, and that is the struggles in doing something like this. Absolutely. You know, and that's, and then we dealt with that even, like you said, going back to my, to Archer World where I was, you know, on that board, you know, and stuff like that. We struggled with that too. You, you know what I'm saying? And, and so, you know, just getting people to come in, you know, no matter how many improvements be done, you know, some, some people get tainted. That's what I've kind of, you know, I mean, just kind of just listening to people in, in the community, you know, that have been here for their whole lives, lifers and stuff like that, you know, it's.
And I think one relates to the other, you know, as if, if you can convince somebody to put on a gun show, say, out at the Agriplex.
Sure.
We've got a population of, you know, eight thousand people in the county. Of course, not all of them are going to go to a gun show, but if that same event were to happen, say, in Cheyenne or somewhere, they've got a whole lot more.
Sure.
Population to drop from.
Sure.
It's, it's hard to compete with those type of things, with those types of events.
We might need to start offering different guns.
But yeah, but you know, and like I said, and there, and there, and there is a lot of, you know, like I said, there's a lot of, I mean, I'm going to be honest. There's a lot of unknowns on, when it comes to change, there, there is. But I think a lot of people know that it's there, you know, it needs to happen, but how do we get there is, is, is a question. And I think, I think when you do change, there's always risk involved. You, you know what I'm saying? I mean, at any point in time, I mean, you, you're risking of, of, of whatever. But then you get, you know, the good thing is, I think, as long as you don't become closed minded, you, you, you could get it worked out, you know what I'm saying? I think why things don't work out is because, because things become closed minded. You know, and that's, and I don't want to be closed minded. I mean, I'm open to anybody's ideas. I mean, it's not just me. You know, I'm just coming up, you know, hey, this is what I'm thinking, or this is what I'm not. Hey, this, this guy approached me, what do you guys think about this type of stuff, you know, and, and so? You know, and so that, that's kind of where I'm coming from. You know, I don't, I'm definitely not a closed minded person, but I just, I just know that there's change that needs to happen because I think it could be so much better. I think the community can benefit from it, and I think we can get more community. But I think we just need to change from the older ways and try to make it a little bit more modern, I guess, if, if that's a, if that's a way to put it. You know, I mean, because not everybody thinks like, you know, I'm a forty year old guy, you know, I mean, I think forty, you know, I think old, you know, I'm not as eighteen year old that thinks like they do nowadays, so.
Do you have any other questions? One of the things we ask is that if you were appointed, would you be willing to take the board member training put on either by UW Extension or the Library Foundation?
Absolutely.
And it's just an online board member training course that you just go through at your own pace? And when you have time to do it, it's pretty easy to do and those are on our website and we would make sure you had nowhere to go to get those.
Sure, absolutely, I would.
Does, does the fair board have to go through the financial training also?
No, really, because they don't have any direct control over any public funds. That's under Kristi Neistat's duties.
So that's a course that'll benefit. I mean, I mean, seriously, if it is, I mean, let me know, because I mean, I can.
Marty, I don't even know how effective it is.
I don't know either.
I mean, if you're helping Anton steal on public funds, you're probably going to do it.
Sure, exactly.
Well, thanks Marty for applying. We'll deliberate a little bit here, a little bit and make our decision. You're welcome to stick around or we'll let you know whatever, whatever your time allows. So thanks for coming in and volunteering.
Talk to you later. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our interviews. Moving on to the appointments portion of it. I think we'll start with the appointment of emergency management coordinator, who, interviews were done last, early this month. And the interview committee recommended that we appoint Mr. Ritz. And I would abstain from this decision because I have business with Mr. Ritz, so.
Good morning, Jamie. You've had two weeks to think about it, what do you think?
Sounds good to me.
You've come to, you've come to terms with it. Did you get a cupcake to celebrate?
No, I went, I went with Tony to visit with the governor and do that.
Did you?
Photo op thing in, in Torrenton, so.
That, that is the point about it, that we recommend to the governor. And so we hired the fire warden and recommended the governor about the emergency management position, so. I don't think that that's out of our hands, but how'd the interview go?
Way good. Then I visited with Lynn Budd and Spencer Pollack and emergency management again, so.
That might be a more informative this meeting. How did that go?
It went pretty good. There's like five online classes that I need to take to be emergency management qualified and give my, my qualifications transferred from the NWCG side into emergency management, so.
What, how long will that take?
I think it's like forty hours of training. All together, but it won't be too bad.
You'd be Hazlapper certified afterwards or what?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
Fair enough.
I think logs three is as far as I'll go.
Is that attainable, you think? Okay, pretty easy? Okay, no worries then. You should be able to do that before New Year's, right?
Sure.
Have you, have you talked to the deputy fire wardens and the fire chiefs in the other areas?
I have. I visited with Mark and came in when we went to Torrenton, went out to lunch.
Rebellion or celebration, which one?
They were good with it. I won't say celebration, but they were good with it.
Don't learn to live with it?
Yeah.
That's right. So, Jeb and I were on the interviewing committee with Penny and Tony, the sheriff. And we all came up with the same recommendation that Jamie Ritz be approved as the fire warden and emergency management coordinator. Jeb, do you have anything for him?
No, I really don't. I really don't. I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, I think going forward, you'd be fine.
And so, and this is, and we've talked about this quite a bit, but one of the big concerns was moving around and being present in the county during fire season and stuff like that. That's going to be the same story. Be here and be on call forever and always.
Yep.
It's like you're waiting for your first girlfriend to call you back.
I hope so, to something.
That's right. So if that's the case, then I would move to recommend the appointment of Jamie Ritz as emergency management coordinator, coordinator to the governor's office and further move that Jamie Ritz be appointed as fire warden of Platte County.
Second. It's been moved in second to appoint Jamie Ritz as fire warden of Platte County and emergency management coordinator. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Welcome to the party, Jamie. I just felt about three hundred pounds fall off my shoulder.
That's exactly right. That's amazing. That's exactly right. I waited for you to get here. You could hear the good news.
You've been, you've been counting hours for this, haven't you? Ooh, he's going to take over.
And the governor says no. Says we like Tony.
We will, uh, we'll do some sway in and see what we can do to.
That's right.
Get that expedited.
That'd be right.
That's right. I'm sure, Tony, that you're going to be really happy to do whatever you can do to, okay, Jamie, get right here for a minute and come with me. And this is what we're going to do. Well, move through the system pretty quick.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
No, it, it helps you have a lot of the, the knowledge, at least on the fireside. I don't have to train you on that, so.
Yeah.
Fifty percent, you know, another stuff I think you'll pick up really quick. It's just getting that phone transferred to your phone. By gosh, that's going to be an email.
And there you go.
Keys even.
There you are.
We have his phone number too.
So, uh, Malcolm, when's the first day to show up and where to show up?
It'll be tomorrow. Yeah, I was thinking understanding it'd be tomorrow. And then I submitted tickets with Jordan and Jim. It looks like you've got hard keys, but make sure it gets a fob and everything.
Yeah.
And so, Tony, if you wouldn't mind kind of shepherding him through.
Absolutely.
Those two.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll even keep the phone for tonight.
Okay, congratulations, Jamie.
Thank you.
Thanks. We'll move on to our fair board appointment. We have two really good candidates. Appreciate coming in and volunteering for these positions. Like I said before, not everybody volunteers for these. What are your thoughts, Commissioner Baker?
It's kind of tough, you know, the way a lot of these questions are answered. I mean, it's not something where you can just say, well, I'm going here, I'm going there, because I've seen things in both. You know, that make it not easy. You know, and nobody can predict the future in, you know, what that looks like. Because this is a five-year appointment and that's kind of heavy. It's not like a year, year and a half or, you know, something to that effect, just filling in a spot. I understand to a degree what these guys are thinking, you know? Some of it's the same, some of it's a little different, but I think they, they, they both have the progress in the fair in, in their best interest. I don't know. Because I've been thinking about this since, you know, already was done. I would have to, I would have to go with Justin at this point.
Do you want to make that a motion?
Oh, yeah. I would, I would make a motion to appoint Justin Genal to, uh, the fair board for an appointment term of five years.
Okay, I would second that. It's been moved in second to appoint Justin Genal to a term on the fair board expiring June, December thirty first, thirty third, twenty thirty. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you. I'll do my best. Glad to serve, stay involved.
So I'm not sure when the next fair board meeting is.
Second Tuesday, second Monday.
January.
January.
So. Congratulations. Thanks for volunteering.
Yeah. Malcolm, do I get information from you then on that training and?
Yeah, I'll, I'll say something.
And you have one year, the expiration date, you know?
I know, I wanted to get people excited and then, uh.
Trick them.
And then, no, it's longer than you thought. And actually, it, on that point, the term of office, it's one of the weird ones that the state statute actually says the fair board has to serve for five years. There's really only two boards you appoint that dictate in some way what the board limits are. Library says three years, not to exceed two consecutive terms. Fair board is five years with no limit on the number of consecutive terms. So, there you go.
So the library board and the joint powers board are determined?
Joint powers, by the agreement.
Yeah.
Not by statute, but by our agreement, yes. The fair board could turn into a life sentence.
It's happened before.
Thanks.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any further business this morning?
Did you do the lodging tax?
Lodging tax, that's right.
I need that.
Wait till Ian comes back. Okay, we've got to move into the appointment for the lodging tax board.
Sorry, we moved to appoint Cindy Witt to the lodging tax and tourism joint power board for a term expiring November twelve thirty one, two eight, two eight.
A second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to appoint Cindy Witt to the lodging tax board. Is there any further discussion? I think she's a really good candidate. Appreciate her coming in and volunteering.
Yeah, really excited for her.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, now do we have any further business?
I had a question. I was wanting to ask with our reminder of Article One, Section One, if any of the four of you guys had any part of giving Kayla Mantle the complaint that I sent in to the governor? If you could answer that for me, I'd be grateful.
I didn't have any.
You did not?
I don't know what Article One, Section One is.
Pardon me?
I don't know what Article One, Section.
Article One, Section One is a reminder that the power is inherent in the people.
Okay.
And Malcolm, did you?
I did not. I've only received one public records request for it. You can access it through public records request from the governor's office, which includes all the pages to include the signature pages.
Interesting thing about public records.
That is incorrect. I talked with the governor's office and they said they've had no requests and they would redact the names as well. I'm just asking, I appreciate you answering and appreciating.
I would invite anybody online or in the room to submit that request to verify which is true. I received it through a public records request with all sixty-four pages to include the signature pages, but I did not release it to Kayla. No.
Thank you. Appreciate your answer.
And since we're talking constitutionality, I will say that Sixth Amendment to the United States Constitution allows you to confront your accuser. And so I think even if the names were redacted, that'd be unconstitutional. And so, anyway, I'll stick with that.
Any further business? We will consider ourselves adjourned.